Meeting is now being recorded.
I would like to call the regular meeting of October 25th, 2021 to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Will Secretary please call roll?
Yes, Commissioner Alder Ready.
Here.
Commissioner Calder Rome.
Present.
Commissioner McLaughlin.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Commissioner Wu. Vice Chair Pham.
Here.
Chair Morrisey. Vice Chair Pham, you have one.
Thank you. Before we begin, I would like to remind my fellow commissioners to turn your microphones on when speaking and off when not speaking. When speaking, please place the microphone about four inches away from you. Thank you. Members of the public may attend planning commission meetings in person or virtually via Zoom. I now invite the commission secretary to describe the way the public can access and participate in this meeting.
Thank you. This meeting is being livestreamed via our portal at santa-anna dot crime gov dot com slash public slash portal and to YouTube at youtube dot com slash city of Santa Ana videos. If you would like to provide a public comment, you may do so in one of the following ways. Join the meeting via Zoom and enter meeting ID 814-632-12456. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, select the hand icon to let us know you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the name you entered. You can also call 669-900-9128 and enter meeting ID 814-632-12456. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, press star nine to let us know that you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the last three digits of your phone number. After you are called upon, you must press star six to unmute yourself. For those who are attending this meeting in person and would like to provide a public comment, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into the secretary. All speakers will have three minutes to speak. I will alert you when your time is up. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to the public comments on non agenda items, Secretary, does anyone wish to speak?
If anyone would like to comment on a non agenda item, please raise the hand icon now or press star nine. We'll wait a few seconds. We do have some hands, Chair, but those are for the public hearing items, no non agenda items.
Thank you. Moving on to consent counter. Is there a motion to approve item A minutes from September 27th, 21 and item B excuse actresses?
So move.
Second.
It's moved by Commissioner Alder Ready, second by Commissioner. Ramos. Secretary, please call for a roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Alder Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Calder Rome.
Aye.
Commissioner McLaughlin.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramos.
Aye.
Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Vice Chair Pham.
Aye.
Chair Morrisey. Motion passes by majority vote with Chair Morrisey absent.
That concludes consent counter. Moving on to the business counter. Public hearing protocols. I will now review the process for the public hearings so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the commission. The public hearing will be open. The applicant will be given the opportunity to speak limited to 15 minutes. Member of the public will be given the opportunity to comment limited to three minutes. That can will be then given the opportunity to respond to comment made by the comment by the public limited to five minutes. The public here will be closed. Discussion will return to the commission with formal actions taken to approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue to review of the application. Please consider the following suggestion when organizing your comments. State your name and address. Strictly voluntary. State whether you support, oppose, or neutral to the proposal. Your statements should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge of what gossip, emotion, and repetition. A clear, concise, and non repetitive argument is most effective. This is a time and place for the public hearing on item number one zoning ordinance amendment number 2021 dash oh three. Please note, recommendation on this item will be forwarded to the city council at a later date for final determination. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regards to this item?
I would like to make a disclosure.
Please.
One of the letters received was from Latino Health Access. Latino Health Access is one of my employers, but their position on this letter will not influence my vote tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramos. Hearing, no other disclosures, Executive Director Mintai will now provide a brief presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and good evening, members of the commission. The item before you tonight is a request for forwarding to the city council. Is this smooth? Thank you. The item before you tonight is a proposed zoning ordinance amendment 2021 dash zero three, which will amend the SCMC to address updates to the existing housing ordinance and to address housing inclusion requirements as recommended by the Housing Ad Hoc Committee with the input from the full city council. It is recommended the commission recommend to the city council adoption of the ordinance as drafted. To provide a little background, the ordinance was first adopted in 2011 and has since been amended twice to respond to development, housing, and economic trends, once in 2015 and again in 2020. In March of this year, the city council formed the Ad Hoc Committee for Housing to address various issues, including the WHO. The recommendation from the committee was presented and discussed by the city council on July 6th, July 26th, and then also September 7th, with a final direction from the city council on October 5th for staff to proceed with final drafting of the ordinance as well as proceeding with the WHO adoption process by first beginning with the planning commission. As part of the process, actually, I also want to say, as part of the process, the city council also seek comments and feedback from the community as well as various stakeholders and community leaders, housing advocates, the development community, of the building industry, as well as various organization active here in the city. So throughout the process, the city council as well as committee expressed various policy enhancement and changes, and those are outlined here in front of you. The elements refer reverting back the triggers and the in lieu fee amount from the pre-September 2020 ordinance. The city council also wanted to incentivize projects to incorporate skill and train workforce as well as local hire and to prioritize various issues of providing for housing for larger families, prioritize housing payment, as well as addressing other issue relating to app bill investing and extending the period for payment of the in lieu fee so that a project can have additional time for the payment, therefore making it feasible to pay the in lieu fee and reduce the cost of construction or essentially the carrying cost of a project. So these are the summary of the key amendments that the council wanted to address in the ordinance, and I'll be going over some of them in detail and some of them more pre-evident. The first one is with relation to the title. It's being re-titled so that it reflects the current ordinance and distinct itself in the prior ordinance. In section 1900, it expands on the scope of the ordinance. Currently, the ordinance really only applies to projects that has a general plan update where the density exceeds the permitted density. The expanded scope will include zoning, expanded density as well, which is consistent to the changes in the various section of the ordinance. Next is section 1901. This has been updated to make some revision to outdated information where it no longer applies for prior projects, but also add to it the new term of extremely low income. This has been a term, a category of income that the council want to prioritize for both programs as well as identifying how we can provide for this segment, housing for this segment of income. The next areas of priority for the council is to address the applicability by establishing new standard for project that needs to comply to the ordinance. This section is amended to essentially revert to the language of the prior WHO before it was amended in October of 2020. The WHO would apply to projects of five units or more instead of it being 20 at the current time. Will also include zone changes that were initiated by the cities going back to November of 2011. It also establishes the applicability of the ordinance to projects that has not been issued with building permit or paying the in lieu fee as of November 17th of 2021. And again, it also will incentivize the construction of extremely low income units as well as blended income. And this is to really try to incentivize construction of the units on site instead of just, you know, opting for the in lieu fee payment. And this new category of blended income is proposed at 10%, of which five, three, and two will be for low, very low and extremely low respectively. Moving on to 411903, this act, this has been really updated just to reflect where the project applies to, but it also deletes the prior to November 28th, 2011 application project has been deemed that this has been outdated and it's further clarified the exclusion of the WHO that may have agreed upon by the city council through a development agreement. Section 1904 is where really some of the crux of the discussion has been is relates to the options for revising the in lieu fees as well as timing of payment. Currently, the in lieu fee per habitable square foot is $5 per square foot. The proposal by the commission based on the recommendation of the Ad Hoc Committee is to change this back to the $15 fee that was in place prior to the September 2020 change to the WHO. It also removes the incentive for the entitled residential project to obtain building permits by October 1st of 2021 as these were some of the Horizon project, and this really no longer applies and it's outdated. So therefore, the session is going to be deleted. The amendment also extended the timing of payment from the issues of building for the in lieu fee option to the payment of the fee at the time of occupancy. As project development sometime can take anywhere between 18 to 24 months, the options of paying the fee at building moving to occupancy permit can oftentimes means a significant savings in carrying cost for a project. So the committee recommended that this be made so that it will help with, as I mentioned previously, some of the carrying costs of the construction of the project. Further, we find this under section 19411904 C1I and II. This, this section is emphasizing the goal of incentivizing a skill and trained workforce as well as a local hire and it's structured to be so that it will be an incentivization instead of looking at it from the perspective of a requirement. This section is incorporated, is amended so that a sliding scale providing for the ability to have a reduced fee of either $5 or $10 depending upon how a project developer proposes to incorporate both a skill and trained labor workforce as well as local hire at a rate of either 30 or 60% will depend upon whether or not they would be able to use the $5 and $10 fee. This also further amended so that the in lieu fee to allow the in lieu fee to be paid to the city, it provides for the development agency with already the use of fund for large families. So this is where it prioritizes how, when the fund is paid to the city can be used and it prioritizes, again, as I mentioned, for large families and also for eviction prevention as well as housing legal assistance, which are two areas that the city council has also deemed to be priorities. It is also amended to strengthen and emphasize the goal for project that receive inclusion or housing funding to negotiate in good face, to good faith, to utilize a skill and trained workforce. And this is where projects that are provided funding by the city to produce affordable housing. And finally, in section 411910, this section is amended to provide for a pure doc review of the in lieu fee as determined necessary by the city council and then also delete a really an outdated term, which is the prior projects that is no longer applicable. And that is really the crux of all the changes that the city council through the Ad Hoc Committee and the discussion has emphasized that those are the policy areas they want to address. What I have here is a map that shows the WHO applicable areas as the ordinance was amended in 2015. And as you can see, that includes the harbor specific plan area, also downtown. It also includes the, the main place mall as well as the Mimu area, which is the area just east of downtown, the metro east overlay zone. This map here shows what potentially could be the impacted area of the proposed WHO should it be adopted. And it includes all the previous areas mentioned, but also includes the five focus area that is a topic of the upcoming general plan update, which includes, you know, areas such as the South Coast, Bristol's South Coast metro area. It includes the dire area as well as the right away for the new streetcar. So this map shows the potential applicable areas for the upcoming proposed WHO. And in conclusion, it is recommended that the planning commission tonight is to recommend adoption of the draft ordinance to the city council for their consideration at the next meeting to amend the article relating to the WHO of the San Ana municipal. That concludes staff's report and I'll be answering any questions.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions of staff at the moment?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Wu.
Executive Director Min. If this is adopted by, approved by us and forwarded to the city council, is the area that you show on the latest map that it only applies to, right, the blue area? So in existing neighborhoods, let's say two neighborhood, Artisha Pilar and Flower Park. If someone is selling their house in Flower Park, can I put a 10 unit apartment on a single family lot to make it applicable for a large family size?
The answer is if the new proposed development requires either a zone change or general plan amendment, then a proposed WHO would apply. But if it's only exercising what is currently in place and the area is it's outside of this map and the zoning and the general plan is already in place, it would not apply under that case.
So, and, and, and I'm not trying to confront you, I'm trying to understand the application once it's approved. So we basically are setting a goal to set a high priority for low income families and to produce more housing units for them. And we are using incentives to do that. But it doesn't change neighborhoods that are basically single family units.
It, this would apply only when there is a request for a zone change in a general plan amendment to allow for residential beyond what's currently existing, whether it's privately initiated or by the city.
So it'll come before the planning commission on a case by case basis?
It would likely, if there's a zone change, general plan amendment would have to go before that commission and open the city council.
So in setting the goal for the city to do this, and, and I'm not against, I, I just think it's about time that we do it. I'm just looking at where the resource is going to come from to balance out the other things in the general plan such as a demand for open space. And, and the only other places I could think of is major materials and, and underperforming industrial areas or, or remnant properties.
So this ordinance itself will not create or reduce the existing capacity for the land use capacity. It is simply an ordinance that addresses an inclusion requirement that says if there's housing to be constructed and in the case when there is a request for an increasing density in those cases and situation, the development would have to come into compliance with the requirement of providing affordable housing as an inclusionary part of the development.
And so we're, we're following the recommendation city council and the public comments in this regard, right?
This is being recommended and through a series of discussion, as I mentioned, with the council and the Ad Hoc Committee as well as participation by various community stakeholders, as I previously mentioned, including the development community, laborers organization, you know, building industry organizations as well as interested stakeholders.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ramos, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'll start off with one question for staff. Why is staff not recommending that the entire city be an applicable area of the WHO?
So based on the proposed language as discussed through the Ad Hoc Committee and the way that it would be applicable, this is where the ordinance would have a trigger when there's a request for an upgrade in the density and a request for more residential units. So potentially this could apply throughout the city wherever there's going to be a request for a zone change or general plan amendment. The trigger itself, and this map really just shows what the current general plan is seeking to do and how that could potentially be applied. But as I mentioned, the trigger can be applied throughout the city when there are cases or when there's a situation of a request for an increase in density for housing.
And has city staff considered a scenario where the triggers are removed? So I was a part of stakeholder conversations in either 2018 or 2019. I know that that was an interesting thing of staff to remove trigger so that the HO could.
That discussion was discussed at the committee level and based on discussion through the city council and the committee, the direction was to look at a trigger based process.
Did you want to add something?
Yeah, I confirm the, the, the Ad Hoc Committee directed staff to stick with the trigger component. A, in order to, if, if analyze removal of that trigger, it would require a six to nine month additional study for the, for the in lieu fee that would be required. And so the Ad Hoc Committee was, was not interested in removing that, that, that trigger.
Okay, thank you. And that, I have additional questions, but I'll wait to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Malak, do you have any comments for staff?
Yeah, I've got a few. And I was, yeah. So I mean, first of all, I kind of understood the comment really, but by the title change, I mean, to me, that's now misleading because my understanding of WHO was it was housing. It mattered whether it was portable housing or a house. And yet we changed it to portable housing, which to me trades the, the area of responsibility and the area of capability. And so I'm not sure how, why that was done. And the next one is just, you know, I guess, I don't know, creation ordinance. What's a creation ordinance?
I think that this, as I mentioned, the title was really to help identify the, this ordinance from prior ordinance. But it, you know, it looks seeks to address affordable housing and it also seeks to help create affordable housing in the city. Both ordinance has always done in terms of, you know, the prior ordinance. It's the housing opportunity ordinance. It directly addresses the creation of affordable housing at various levels. So this is really an update to the title to help distinguish it from the prior ordinance. But its, its foundational function, its foundational goal has not changed fundamentally.
But the ironic thing is that we're talking about, you know, we're talking about portable housing relying on occupied housing to create the funds to do a portable housing. And it's just, maybe it's like way too complicated for the Irish citizen. I think it just matters to say, hey, the WHO, I mean, I even tried to look at the acronym or whatnot. But I will say it's an acronym. But I, I just, I just, you know, I just can't see what, why we've spent time changing the name of those issues.
Understood.
The, the other thing is that, you know, I don't know, I didn't do it at this point in time. But, you know, I looked at, we looked at this as a, basically as a portable housing. I know, of course, it's that it changes, we've had changes. And to me, that's reasonable, you know, if I'm not an ordinance adopter, unless something changes that an outside influence could impact this, you know, I think that we should have some boundaries as to how often this is sort of getting updated. Because I think that from, from some point of view, we're here now, a year and a half later updating the ordinance again. And there's nothing in the ordinance that says when and how should the administration of this document be updated. I think that's something that we need to look at as far as, you know, is there going to be, isn't it better than having this thing updated three to five years? You know, that way there's predictability is what this is saying is that every year I can turn that, update this thing. Oh, we make $16 a year. I think we'll $18 next year. And, and that kind of, that kind of could cause some tremendous, I think, challenge to, to the developers. I don't know what we see in the minds of they be until they get two thirds of the way through and how far they can bug themselves into a hole where they have to do some, do some changes. Not because of them, but because of what we've done. But this will just change things every, every year.
Is that, are we asking questions, you know, or are we?
It's a discussion as well as questions. This is the time for all of that.
Yeah, I mean, just to echo what, what Commissioner often was saying. Like, is there any, like, study sessions that have been going on or proposed for this specific project? I mean, just kind of what you were saying, like, tracking history, you know, so I don't know, like.
So in March, beginning in March with the formation of the Housing Ad Hoc Committee, the committee met with staff on various occasions. And as a result of that, the recommendation of the committee based on the information that they provided a update to the city council first time on July 6th. And through that process, there were subsequent meetings that were held publicly on July 26th as well as September 7th. At, during those meetings, the city council discussed among uh discussed among themselves, provided direction for staff to make changes um and to also reach out um to the uh various stakeholders uh so that they can also participate in the input process. And that was done on, I believe, July twenty sixth, um where over a hundred stakeholders will reach out and some um actually attended the meeting and provided their input. So yes, there's been a significant amount of discussion at the city council in directing staff to draft the ordinance as proposed before.
And it's uh, and so that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pham. Um I know that Commissioner Ramos mentioned earlier that there was this sort of discussion that projects um are not subject to the inclusionary requirements if they don't exceed established density limits. So the reason why I thought about that, and this this is my question, if if we're going through the general plan update right now, and that is going to increase density limits in many areas of the city and allow more by right development, doesn't that mean that the in loop fee, um the fund is going to decrease or potentially decrease as a result? Since the instance in which we would have an in loop fee would decrease because the areas which it applies, um the need for a density bonus are going to be sort of decreased or less applicable in the future under after, let's say, whenever the general plan amendment, uh the general plan update is approved.
So under the current version of the draft ordinance, um as I mentioned, the inclusional requirement would apply to any privately initiated, meaning the private development uh or a residence or developer would pose an increase in density, uh either a general plan amendment or zone change, it would apply. Uh it would also apply to any city initiated actions to increase the density either of the year, zone change or general plan amendment, and would actually apply all the way back to two thousand eleven. So that any action that the city has taken since two thousand, November two thousand eleven, this would apply to that. And this was a feature of the prior ordinance before September of two thousand twenty, when that was the case. And so therefore, the committee is recommending that the city goes back to that ordinance. Therefore, when you look at this map, um this was the area at the time when uh the WHO would be applicable to these areas. In the upcoming general plan update, you have five additional focus area. And this would also be a part of the WHO app and villa area should be adopted.
Okay, okay. Uh thank you for that clarification. The other question I had is a couple of times in the staff report, I I saw mention of a takings, um meaning that a a legal takings, right? And so the courts have ruled that inclusionary uh housing requirements um cannot deprive an owner of a fair and reasonable return. Now, what what's the guidance that helps us determine whether or not we're going to the point of uh of a takings? Do we have any guidance in that?
So this ordinance, as with the initial ordinance uh enabling this process when adopted in two thousand eleven, is based on the premise that the city is not looking at requiring this basically to all projects. This only applies when there is a benefit that a property owner who did not enjoy before is basically asking from the city to allow for uh that benefit to take place and hence general plan amendment, zone changes.
Okay, thank you.
Um there are a few things I'd like to ask. Uh one of it, one is that in the context of our neighboring cities, is the WHO unique to San Ana or are there um similar ordinance that has been deployed throughout Orange County?
So the WHO is essentially an inclusionary zoning requirement that not many cities, but a, you know, uh it's becoming more and more prevalent for cities to look at, including as part of its development process and inclusion requirement for uh affordable housing. Um so you will see in other cities, this is considered what inclusionary zoning. It could be density bonus uh requirement, it could be affordable housing requirement. But here, out of the thirty four cities that we have, I believe, six, if not seven cities now, uh with custom looking at this, uh that has an inclusion requirement. So uh it's not widely uh applied, but there's um more and more cities looking and considering this type of zoning regulations.
The reason I wanted to ask is I wanted to see if we had um historical data to see the impact of programs similar to the WHO, whether or not it slows uh development, whether or not it spurs development, or whether or not you know, elements similar to our own ordinance that promotes uh inclusionary housing, you know, the the impact.
I mean, that's a good question. That's a great question. Um over the, and Justin maybe can can assist me with this, but over the last ten years, um on the average, uh we have had uh about, you know, over twenty five investment that has been developed and constructed in terms of market rate on the average per year over the last ten years. And as part of that development process, as um part of the inclusion requirement, we have been able to produce about twenty three million dollars in terms of the in loop fee.
Twenty six.
Twenty six now, okay, twenty six now. And uh maybe you could provide a little bit uh information about how many units and have been produced as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Uh the uh there have been thirty three units built uh as a result for existing ordinance. Uh of those uh of those thirty three uh twenty three are ownership uh units, homeownership units that were built on site and ten uh ten rentals. Uh but in total, uh the in loop fee, the in loop fees that have been generated have been twenty six million nine hundred and ninety one dollars.
And then um one more question. Given that we do have um the in loop fee or built onsite or there's, I know there's other opportunities to, you know, offsite, things like that. Do we have a uh data to to illustrate when given the opportunity, if the private market choose to pay the in loop fee or produce uh affordable housing units?
So I think what Justin's just illustrated was how much fee we have collected and how many units we have actually had in terms of constructed onsite, which was thirty three units.
Yeah.
So we have collected twenty six million dollars over the last, uh since two thousand eleven, and constructed onsite has been thirty three units. So um we can say that uh the in loop fee has been the options of choice that we've seen developer has opted for.
Thank you.
Just just a comment before you, before you get back to your seat, Justin. Thanks. I guess when we look at the twenty six million dollars, has that break out on the standpoint of affordable, low affordable, modern and everything else? I mean, that's all that's been funded by this twenty six million.
So uh thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McLaughlin, are you asking about how those fees have been used to provide affordable housing elsewhere?
I mean, how much we 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 received twenty six million in from the developers?
Yes.
Going out, and make it hopefully make this simpler. How much does it cost per door for each of the categories of affordable housing that we've got?
Unfortunately, we don't, I don't have that information readily available.
Yeah, that to me is a fundamental cornerstone of of how we're doing with with the in loop fees and everything else. I mean, that's one of the underpinnings. It says, you know, what is it cost per door? And what, where are we spending it? Because when we talk to the developers, in many cases, we sit there and say, how would you, you know, can you really take and look, look at putting these into your current structure and bury, you know, have twenty units be affordable housing inside their current project? We ask that question and we always get the just, get the response back, it doesn't pencil out.
So I I think I, um maybe Justin, if you can go over how we have used the money and leveraged that money in different projects and how many units have those projects created in terms of the various project that the funding has been used to leverage?
Absolutely, absolutely. So with the uh with the twenty six million dollars that we've received in inclusionary housing in loop fees, uh we have financed a development of of different projects, including the uh La Placita Cinco project, uh received one point three million dollars. That is a fifty unit new construction project.
That's the one on Seventeenth Street?
No, no, uh it's on Fifth Street.
Fifth Street, sorry, okay.
Uh and then uh the one on Seven, on Seventeenth Street that you referred to is the San and Arts Collective. Uh received.
Uh the other one that's transitioned?
Uh that one, that one did not receive any uh inclusionary housing in loop fees. Uh the Casa Corincia project, Aqua, Aqua Housing. Uh but the Arts Collective did uh in the amount of four point seven million dollars. And then we provided four point one million dollars for the Link Emergency Shelter, uh for emergency shelter services for uh for homeless individuals. Now, in terms of uh commitments that uh that we have made so far, uh we've committed five hundred and sixty five thousand dollars for two homeownership, affordable homeownership opportunities that are being developed by Habitat for Humanity. We're anticipating the project to hopefully break ground this uh before the end of this year. And then we've committed one point five million dollars for the construction of Westview House at uh the uh the other side of Seventeenth Street and near Westminster, Westminster Avenue. And it's uh, and that project will include eighty four units of affordable housing. And then in addition to that, we've provided ninety thousand dollars for Wise Place and two hundred and ten thousand dollars so far in down payment assistance. And now next Tuesday, we'll actually be recommending to city council uh to uh add uh one point two million dollars of down payment assistance uh to uh to create more homeownership opportunities for for families. But uh that's a generally a summary of uh what we've done with the inclusion, inclusionary housing in loop fees that we've received with the remaining balance, because when you do the math, there's a substantial remaining balance. Uh we're in the process of drafting an RFP for affordable housing development in order to commit those projects, those funds to future projects and leverage those funds uh for future projects.
So the funds used to leverage project, depending on the type of project, can have different levels of leveraging. Uh in the case of when Justin mentioned about the one point three million dollars uh for the fifty units that equates to our participation of twenty six thousand dollars per door uh that the city would be able to help leverage that money to produce. Now, if you were to produce an affordable housing unit, depending on the size and improvements, it could cost anywhere between uh three to six hundred thousand dollars produced in affordable housing units in the state of California. That is the actual cost. So we would not be able to, um you know, obviously twenty six thousand is not the actual cost of construction. But using the the fund, um the city was able to leverage that funding for additional units. So it's more bank for the more production of units for the dollar amount that was participating.
Okay. I'll go back to um the rest of the commissioners. Uh Commissioner Wu, do you have any additional comments?
Yeah, I I I'm I'm having um trouble reconciling because our our general plan and our hu- housing, um our WHO is very robust compared to other cities. Because I've been looking at other cities from San Diego uh up to uh Santa Cruz. And we're very robust and our language is very good. And there's supportive of community aims to meet some of our social needs. So uh so um I'm just wondering, why are there other cities putting in more effort into inclusionary zoning and incentives? That's that's the only thing that come in my mind as I listened to our presentation.
Great question, Commissioner Who, uh Commissioner Wu, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're Who, he's Wu.
Uh we have uh an analysis from uh Kaiser Marston uh that was conducted for us in April two thousand twenty one that compares various inclusionary ordinances. Uh most recently, when you look at the uh city of Long Beach, uh there, they have an inclusionary ordinance in which um their in loop fee is, let's see here, thirty eight dollars and fifty cents per square foot for rental projects and twenty three eighty for ownership projects. The city of San Diego, which was previously mentioned, has an in loop fee of fifteen eighteen per square foot uh in two thousand twenty, twenty one, and increasing to twenty two fifty five per square foot in twenty twenty three.
Other differences I could think of is uh in San Diego, we have more open space and land than you could build housing in the older neighborhoods that are inviting uh affordable housing developments. And uh in Long Beach, we're sort of built up like we are. Um so um uh so as as I look for places built for housing, I haven't figured out how to do that in San Antonio. Despite all the good things that we're we're putting in the place. I'll get it one day.
Commissioner Ramos?
Yes, thank you. Um these questions might be for Justin as well. Sorry, Justin, he's about to sit down. Um so of those twenty six million dollars in in new funds that were collected, how many, what a, what amount, what dollar amount of those twenty six million dollars resulted from a five dollar in loop fee?
Let me, if I, if I can pull up that information, I'll, I can, I can provide it to you in a second.
Okay, um I'll I'll go to an another question. So well, that that question, I still have that question. And then uh I would also like to know what dollar amount of those twenty six million dollars was collected from an in loop fee that was of nine dollars or greater? And then I'm also wondering, what the the study that the city council commissioned, um what did that study or analysis say would be a feasible amount for the in loop fee to be set up for the city of San Ana?
So uh Kaiser Marston uh was contracted by the city to ensure that there wasn't a a takings, as Commissioner already uh uh referenced earlier. And Kaiser Marston determined that a reasonable uh in loop fee for the city of San Ana would be seventeen dollars and ten cents to seventeen eighty uh uh per square foot for uh rental uh units and thirteen dollars per square foot for ownership units.
Thank you. Um and I'm wondering why uh city staff is recommending a fifteen dollar in loop fee instead of an in loop fee or a maximum in loop fee within that seventeen dollars and ten cents to seventeen dollars and eighty cents range?
So as I mentioned, this is a direct recommendation through the Housing Ad Hoc Committee, making up of the mayor and several council members, uh and well, has been discussed at the council level. So this wasn't a number that was just proposed by staff. It was well vetted through the city council process uh and the feedback that we received since March uh of this year.
Thank you for that clarification. Um one more question on the applicability of the of the WHO. So I know that the transit zoning code is there, uh so the transit zoning code is the downtown area. And I'm wondering why it would only be applicable to the industrial and non-residential areas of that?
Again, the trigger, if you recall, is when there is a request for increase in residential density, which means that it could be going from an existing amount or it could be going from zero. Uh so it's a combination of whether there's existing residential that's permitted there in downtown uh prior to the uh implementation, does have residential already. So that's why it's part of the overlay area where it allows for the existing manufacturing to activate the residential. And that's why it's only certain areas of the downtown.
Thank you. And I'm wondering if when we think of, I I understand why the triggers are being included. Um thank you, Steph, for clarifying that. But I'm thinking that maybe those triggers need to be considered within the context of the city. Um and I'm thinking specifically of that area, the transit zoning code area, because it's surrounded by neighborhoods that might be classified as sensitive communities uh when we think about environmental justice in areas that where renters have come to to the planning commission in the past and to the city council, citing their housing concerns and the fact that they're being priced out of the city. So I I would like to see how we can consider these triggers while also thinking about the city's local context and how we can bring affordable housing to the neighborhoods that needed them. And how we can bring affordable housing to the neighborhoods that needed them most.
Certainly, additional triggers can be evaluated and considered. But the current proposal is to look at triggers that are initiated through a zone change or general plan amendment to increase in density. If the goal of the program is to apply it citywide, additional studies will have to be conducted. In order to address the return on investment and the taking issues, and that would have to be vetted differently. The current ordinance did not look to address inclusion requirement in that, from that aspect. It's really looking at the existing trigger where it's based on a request to increase the density. Whether by the private development community or done so through the city.
Thank you. And I'm not advocating for additional triggers right now. But I'm thinking how the existing triggers can be considered and maybe adapted differently depending on the context of them.
I think one aspect that you could share with the council as part of tonight's discussion is for the council in the future to consider additional triggers. That, you know, would be articulated, could be articulated for the future, something to be considered.
Thank you. And then just one last question for this round. I know we're gonna go to public comments soon. But does the city staff have, were there any studies done to? That can show or illustrate whether it is more cost effective for developers to build onsite? At the percentages that are being proposed or to pay in the fee at the rates that are being proposed today?
So in our evaluation and discussions with our consultant. To incentivize the construction onsite. We developed through the assistance of our consultant, a ten percent requirement. That is a blended rate of five percent low. Three percent very low and two percent extremely low. And at that level, according at least to the numbers that were ran, it does make sense to produce affordable housing onsite. So it's going to be really upon the each development project to evaluate. But at the minimum, we look at whether or not those numbers could be competitive, right? To produce onsite as well as, you know, being competitive to the in lieu fee.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ramos, in response to your earlier question, approximately six million dollars out of the twenty-six million dollars that has been generated. Paid at the five dollars per square foot.
Okay, so less than twenty-five percent of the money that was collected in the in lieu fees was at the five-dollar rate?
Yes, that's what I heard.
And the other over seventy-five percent was that collected at a rate of nine dollars or higher?
Yes.
Okay, so we have precedent that developers are even willing to pay over nine dollars. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramos. We have Chair Morsy on line, let's include him in the discussion. Chair Morsy, can do yours?
Yeah, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Yes, sorry, I can't be there. And unfortunately, I haven't heard the full conversation. But I think the tenant of the inclusionary housing ordinance. Is to create communities that have inclusive housing infused throughout. And we should do everything possible to enable the developers. To include the housing in their developments. So we can create diverse communities. So. You know, I think we should advocate the council to create a fee structure. We won't be able to do that. I mean, echo the concerns previously I heard expressed is that. And I've heard from other developers that they can't make their developments pencil out. With the, this, the fee structure is being proposed. So I think from. A question I have is for staff is. I guess some of the concessions. I, I think we should can, are there other concessions that we could advocate council consider such as? Accelerated Plan Check, enable these projects to come online sooner. Things that would benefit the developers. You know, time is money, so if they can save some time, they could add it to their form up. Are there any other types of incentives we could offer them as part of the inclusionary?
Thank you, Chair. And as part of the ordinance, there is already existing concessions. That allows for concessions to occur. In addition, we also have a density bonus provision that is not being proposed to be modified. It is going to continue to allow for a density bonus to occur if a developer requests for it. But as I mentioned, in addition to that, there are concessions that is built in to the WHO. And I can refer to this section. Give me a minute.
Yeah.
I believe it's nineteen forty-one nineteen.
Four. Nineteen oh four. Yeah, well, with the feedback I have is that even with those concessions, it's difficult. Is the, so a question on the density bonus. If they're granted a density, does the bonus need to include? The percentages required under the?
The answer is no. And there's a density bonus, the density bonus unit is not included in the count. As part of the affordable requirement, it's only on the market rate unit. And you're right, it's forty-one nineteen oh four point one.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any further questions at this time. Thank you. Thank you, man.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Ramos?
Yeah, one question I've got that just came to mind as I was thinking about an article I read this morning. And that is, what's not defined here? And we've heard it defined in a number of different arenas, such as the election process over the last couple of years. Workforce housing. Now, I mean, it's, we haven't, we've say nothing to that effect in our documentation. Yet two surrounding cities have addressed their affordable housing with workforce housing. Anaheim, it was just announced today that Anaheim is buying a two-hundred-and-thirty room. Two-hundred-and-thirty unit apartment complex in Costa Mesa did the same about a month and a half ago. Where in our WHO do we talk about something of this nature? So the WHO's goal is to provide housing opportunity for different various income levels. Yeah. From extremely low, which was recently added as part of this process, to low as well as moderate. All those housing income level could be and is considered workforce housing. It's another term for housing, affordable housing. It is different levels of income based on the type of professions that are prevalent in our city. And the income levels of our residents. I saw both of them state in terms of sixty-two, sixty-one-twenty. I'm sorry, what do we refer in income? The income level sixty percent to one-twenty is the figure used. So the income levels for low to moderate. Is, I'm sorry, the moderate is eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty. Low, and Justin can correct me if I'm wrong, is from fifty to eighty. Very low is from thirty to fifty and extremely low is even below that.
It is moderate?
Is moderate? Moderate to you, to some extent. Moderate is in a part of our affordable housing requirement. So it ranges everywhere from zero percent all the way up to eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent of the income level. Or the Orange County median AMI. So all of those could be considered and termed categorically as workforce housing. It's just making the distinction at what specific level of affordability. I see. Yeah, but I mean, it's just, just curious statement. Why do our surrounding cities define what they have today as work for? And I think the other side of the process is that, if I'm not mistaken, with regards to Costa Mesa. They basically purchased that and funded it through the city. Entire complex was funded through the city. And that certainly is something that the inclusionary fund could evaluate and be a part of the city's priorities for spending of those dollars. I don't believe we have any city-owned projects that are managed or have been acquired by the city. In terms of the terms of workforce housing, I believe really communities sometimes use that term. To help increase the acceptability of affordable housing in their community. Okay, I mean, that's a positive, that should be a positive situation. It is, and we don't disagree. It's just that our ordinance make very clear on what priorities we have. And they're all workforce housing.
Commissioner Caldwell, do you have any additional comments?
Yeah, just a, I mean, I've written down a couple of things. What would happen if we say sorry for the ad hoc? And we don't agree with your recommendations and we leave it at five dollars?
What happened then? That would be a recommendation from the planning commission. The city council ultimately is the deciding body. You are an advisory body.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Alderetti, do you have any additional comments?
I'm looking at the ordinance. I just did a word search. And I looked up the word workforce, but the only time it appears is in reference to the in lieu fee schedule for local skilled and trained workforce initiatives. So I didn't see that that word in there. But Commissioner McGoughlin's comment got me thinking, is it in there as a sort of euphemism for affordable housing? But I didn't see it. The other sort of general question is, what was the first city, the identity or the name of the first city in Orange County? That had a inclusionary zoning ordinance? Would that be Irvine? Because my sense is San Ana came to the game kind of late.
I'm gonna have to defer to Justin. Do you know when the Irvine ordinance was put in place? I know our ordinance was put in place in two thousand eleven.
Oh, that's fine. I grew up in the Bay Area and in San Francisco specifically. Inclusionary zoning ordinances have been a part of the Bay Area housing landscape.
That could exist.
Yes, so the other question I had is. And I think you answered this. So developers, this ordinance gives developers the flexibility to either build units onsite or through an in lieu fee. But it seems almost always they choose the in lieu fee. And what's the basis for that? I assume it's because it's cheaper to buy.
I don't have the precise answer to that because we don't have access to performance and financial information. All we can share with you is the information of what actually occurred. So we share the information, what units we are producing and how much funding we are collecting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to. Comments from the public. Madam Secretary, do we have received any communications, written communications?
Yes, we received three letters of communication before the four P M deadline. Those were distributed to the commission and posted on our website.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is now open. We will now take comments from the public. Madam Secretary, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment?
You would like to comment on this item, please select the hand icon if you're participating via Zoom. Or if you're calling in, please press star nine. We have six hands raised, so we'll go ahead and call those. In the order, so we'll start with Araceli. Please unmute yourself and go ahead and start to speak. You'll have three minutes.
Si, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Araceli Robles. Estoy aquí para apoyar las modificaciones que le están haciendo a la ordenanza de oportunidad de viviendas. Ahorita más que nunca, este, con esta pandemia de COVID, toda nuestra comunidad de bajos ingresos merece tener una vivienda accesible. Yo trabajo en Latino Gelatinas y tengo varias familias que viven en una vivienda de bajo costo. Y completamente les cambia su perspectiva de vida. Los niños están más tranquilos, tienen su propio espacio. Ahorita que estuvimos por la pandemia, cada quien con. Tomando clases en diferentes cuartos. La atención que recibieron los niños que tienen una vivienda de bajo costo. Y tener su propio espacio está haciendo una diferencia muy grande en sus calificaciones después que regresaron presencialmente. Entonces también este, les agradezco mucho que. Que hagan, regresen a quince dólares el pie cuadrado como teníamos años atrás. Que en vez de disminuirlo, se tomen en consideración de seguirlo aumentando. Porque el costo de vida lamentablemente está subiendo y las personas que más estamos sufriendo. Somos las personas que vivimos con muy bajo costo en nuestros ingresos. Estoy apoyo totalmente todos los cambios en la oportunidad de vivienda para Santana. Y les agradezco mucho que tomen en cuenta mi, en consideración mi opinión porque eso es lo que yo vivo todos los días con mi familia. Este necesitamos más vivienda de bajo costo para mejorar las familias aquí en la ciudad de Santana. Gracias y que tengan muy buenas tardes.
I'm not going to attempt to translate everything she said because it was a little bit late.
I can provide support if you would like. What? Sorry, I can provide support if you would like.
Sure, I'm just gonna summarize whatever basically she was coming to object, reducing the fee from fifteen dollars to five dollars. She believes that the fifteen dollars should remain as the cost of living is going well. And the need for affordable housing continues to grow. And we basically, people with low income or resources are the one that suffers the most. And so therefore, keeping the fee of fifteen dollars will provide more affordable housing for the residences in Indiana. And if there are problems, we can add anything else that I might have missed.
Thank you. I'll add a little bit of the intro. So she said her name is Araceli. She works for Latino Health Access and is working with many families that live in affordable housing. She said that she has seen firsthand of living in an affordable housing development changes the lives of families. She, like we said by staff, she is asking that today we raise the fee. We adopt what is being recommended and even consider raising the fee. I feel like her with the rest, but she ended by saying that she hopes that we will consider her opinion. As it is within her opinion, it is from experience.
That official translation? How is this going to be?
It's audio recorded.
Audio recorded? Does that include translation by another commissioner?
Yes.
The next person who wants to speak is Anna, and you may unmute yourself.
Um. Next to speak.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Anna Charco and I am here on behalf of Latino Health Access to speak on the proposed amendments to the Housing Opportunity Ordinance and Affordable Housing Fund policies. Latino Health Access has been proudly working alongside community residents for over twenty-seven years. Providing services that address immediate health needs while providing information. And facilitating opportunities to increase civic participation. And impact policies that will improve those social determinants in the long term. Therefore, we urge you to support the proposed amendments to the Housing Opportunity Ordinance and Affordable Housing Fund policies. Beyond this, there are health consequences. Beyond this, such as health consequences, the COVID pandemic has disrupted the global economy with soaring income loss, under unemployment and unemployment rates, an impact that has worsened and aggravated the living condition for many residents across the city of Santana. While the city has increased production of affordable housing, it has not been enough to address the parts, the past deficits and growing needs for affordable housing based on the population housing needs and income of residents in Santana. According to the city local data, eighty percent of Santana renters are moderate are moderate, low and very ill income renters, as you mentioned before. Yet the most significant increase of housing has been in the above moderate housing category with a total of three thousand two hundred seventy four above moderate units produced between two thousand thirteen and twenty twenty one. And then a moderate average rent of twenty thousand two, four thousand dollars. Therefore, it is crucial that you all support the proposed amendments to increase the in lieu fee from five dollars to fifteen per square feet. The amendment to add a percentage of rental units for extremely low income household. Have the Housing Opportunity Ordinance apply to all city initiated land use changes and rezoning and make new construction of affordable housing for extremely low and very low income families a priority when using the housing fund monies. These are the families that have been the most pressing needing in the city of Santana. In addition, the funds should also prioritize addressing the housing security, eviction prevention and housing legal assistance for residents that would directly help cure in Santana. Cure in Santana residents with the exception of code enforcement. Diversion of these funds to other programs unrelated to housing and direct help for families would not increase or improve the supply of affordable housing. All in all, increase affordable housing development opportunities along with the market rate. Housing will be crucial in creating new housing that residents in Santana could truly afford. Thank you for your time and have a great night.
The next person that wants to speak is Daisy. You may go ahead and unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Daisy and I'm calling on behalf of the Kennedy Commission in support of the Housing Opportunities Ordinance that increases the in lieu fee from five dollars to fifteen. It's important that the city prioritizes the development of affordable housing and for these funds to be used in that way. It is important to add a percentage of rental units, the development of the housing for extremely low income households and for the funds to prioritize housing security, eviction prevention and housing legal assistance for residents in the city of Santana. The WHO should also apply to our residential developments in the city. Thank you.
The next person that wants to speak, his name is Andrew, and you may unmute yourself.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Andrew Gonzalez, calling from Smart Sheet Metalworkers Local One Zero Five. Speaking in opposition to the draft proposal here this evening. The purpose of the WHO should be to encourage the the building and construction of affordable housing. And unfortunately, this does not do that. What this ordinance does is does disincentivize the building of market rate housing, but does very little to spur the development of affordable housing. Furthermore, it does nothing to increase the wages of working men and women in the city through a woefully inadequate incentive program that to encourage the use of locally hired skilled and trained workforce. In section forty one, one, one nine zero four, the fee incentives are woefully inadequate to spur the the use of a locally hired skilled and trained workforce. These fee schedules just encourage developers to exploit cheap labor and to maximize profits at expense of working men and women in the city. In section, we have no position or preference or recommendation onto a fee schedule. Developer does not want to build affordable housing or use skilled and trained workforce. We just know that this this section is just woefully inadequate. In section one nine zero nine, other eligible uses of Inclusionary Housing Fund include but are not limited to. This section actually allows for the Inclusionary Housing Fund to become a slush fund to be used as other eligible uses for anything that the city council desires. The term included but not limited to means we could just use it for anything we like. The Inclusionary Housing Fund should be used for the purpose of building, constructing or helping people to afford new housing in the city. And and that's what we think the the fund should be. This section is sets up the WHO to be ripe for fraud, waste and abuse. Finally, in section one nine zero nine, number five, the the incentive or or the requirement for, and that's not even a requirement, it's once again aspirational language on the use of a skilled and trained workforce finds its way back into this ordinance by encouraging and developers should negotiate in good faith. It is shocking that the city would not require a developer to use a locally hired skilled and trained workforce if they were to receive a substantial benefit or financial benefit from the city. Furthermore, this section could, in fact, weaken prevailing wage laws and be in violation of D I R and prevailing wage laws under regulations and standards. For all of these reasons, we're asking for the the committee here today to vote no on the proposed language and send this language back to the to the staff for more more development. Thank you.
The next person who wants to speak, his name is Manny, and you may you may unmute yourself. You have three minutes to speak.
Hello, can you hear me there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you so much, Commissioners Ian and Staff for continuing to bring this item forward. And it's a long complicated process with a lot of moving parts. I wanted to echo the comments by Commissioner Ramos related to the inclusion of the the WHO and its latest version to the entirety of the Transit Zoning Code. Now, I realize that the trigger language was there for a reason in order to avoid kind of a longer study and making sure that, you know, we're doing everything legally. So I totally understand that. But one way forward might be to look at having maybe special provisions for the Transit Zoning Code to allow for additional local density bonuses. I believe that this is probably the most proper area in order to kind of encourage, you know, higher density, you know, zero parking requirements, you know, you have pretty intensive developments since it is an area that we're looking to develop. I think that that might be one way to kind of include the WHO language and some additional local housing production that I think would satisfy all parties. The other question I had, and this is maybe just for Commission to maybe digest a little bit more is to whether or not there's going to be a running list of the income categories generated by this process. So I imagine that maybe moderate, low income and very low will be produced first rather than extremely low projects or might be the reverse because of additional questions with low income housing tax credits and all that entire market. But, you know, if we can kind of keep track to see which categories are not being created, that that might be able to be worked into the WHO somehow. I think that would be a way to to improve our targeting there. Now, as we look at the map, I think that there's still, at least in my mind, some underperforming areas that relate to the midtown specific plans. So basically, everything running from downtown up to North Main. And, you know, a lot of reasons why that wasn't included in the general plan update, but it is an extremely underperforming part of the city. And so is the Bristol kind of street specific plan. And I don't know if we're going to be ever updating that, but that seems like another area of great opportunity for housing production, really connected to the urban fabric. And it might be something that, again, for for the commissioners here to look at as we're trying to solve the housing crisis, because I do believe we should have this in the context of ways to solve the housing crisis, and that's why we're having this discussion. As the previous caller had mentioned, you know, there's a lot of questions, I think, on the labor provisions, whether they're strong enough, whether they're too weak, you know, whether or not they're actually going to do anything. So I think that that's still kind of an open question. I really don't have an answer to that, but I think it's a very pertinent place for additional analysis. And, you know, a project like this will definitely require additional evaluation, so if we can build in an evaluation period, that would be, you know, great just to kind of see the effect of all this. And again, you know, I just do recommend that the Commission take a look at this as a first step to figuring out how to provide additional housing that's compatible with our community. There's still, I think, more that can be done either through kind of, you know, affordable by design projects, allowing, you know, single room occupancies, different typologies of buildings, looking at the
Again, I'd like to remind that public comments are to be three minutes. Thank you.
The next person who wants to speak is Luis, and you may unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Luis Sarmiento from our Community Land Trust here in Santana. We're a local nonprofit, Thrive Santana, that has been working also with residents for many, many years here in Santana to advocate for for local policy that makes sure that the development that's happening in our city is beneficial to local residents. I'm calling to speak also in support of the proposed changes to the Housing Opportunities Ordinance. In particular, the, you know, returning to the fifteen dollars per square foot in Luffy as well as the, you know, the higher levels of affordability, especially for extremely low income, very low income as affordable housing in our city. And I also want to echo some of the comments that have been made for greater levels of affordability that are needed in our city. And and look for opportunities to to continue moving in that direction in in the future. Another recommendation that we want to include, and we mentioned in the past, is the inclusion of community land trusts in the section around the Inclusionary Housing Fund forty one nineteen zero nine. And I did send in some some suggested language for the inclusion of community land trusts. I don't believe I made it before the deadline, but that language is is pretty easy to incorporate as one of the potential strategies that the city could use to make sure that affordable housing that is being built will benefit the city's residents in perpetuity as other cities have done, including the city of Irvine, the city of Oakland, San Francisco, over two hundred and fifty cities throughout the United States are using community land trusts as a way to make sure that affordable housing is responsive to local needs. And also, a few other recommendations that 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 we have submitted and would be happy to to discuss. But overall, in support of the direction that we're going in tonight to increase the affordability levels and the flow of of affordable housing in our city. Thank you.
The next caller who wants to speak, the phone number ends in two seven three. You may go ahead and unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak. Or please press star nine.
Yes, Kareem, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, hi, my name is Ernesto Medrano, representing the Los Angeles and Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council. Represent over one hundred and forty thousand hardworking men and women, over twenty four thousand apprentices in both counties, of which many of them reside in the city of Santana. We are partnering agreements with the city of Santana to work on their capital improvements. We have agreements with the Branch of Santiago Community College District as well as with the Santana Unified School District to provide the skilled and trained workforce and to provide the local veteran preference hiring. So we've been around for a long time. We have actually one training facility, we have over twenty six in our jurisdiction, apprenticeship. We also have a multi-craft curriculum where apprenticeship readiness program at Remington College. So like I say, we're 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 solid stakeholders. I want to thank the staff for working diligently. I know this is a difficult project, a difficult issue, it's complex. I don't want to belabor the what Andrew Gonzalez had mentioned earlier, but I did want to put a point of reference that in residential construction, the median wage is fourteen dollars and ninety eight cents. And I think if a worker is going to work on housing, they ought to be able to afford to purchase it or rent it and 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 not fall under the guidelines that would make them eligible for affordable housing. We're able to have an opportunity here to provide for good workforce development. We graduate over ninety three percent of the state certified apprentices and we would like to be able to see them work on these projects. Unfortunately, I think the sliding scale on the skilled and trained workforce comes short. And in in summary, I think it'd be appropriate to discuss what happened last summer at this planning commission and the language that really was strong and that really required contractors at all levels to adhere to Public Contract Code twenty six zero one to twenty six zero three, which provides the skilled and trained workforce, all of it, which is state certified apprenticeship graduates. And I think you really ought to get a good look at that because as the language standard is only aspirational, it only encourages, it only advises or directs developers to to have contractors fall under this. And that's just not going to work for us. So again, I would highly encourage that you look at the at the language or the policy that came out last year out of this body because I think that really adhere to the appropriate labor standards and the appropriate skilled and trained workforce requirements. Thank you very much.
Are there any other speakers that would like to speak? We do have a couple of speaker cards. Proceed with those.
First in person speaker is Mr. Adam Wood.
Evening, commissioners. Adam Wood with the Building Industry Association. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. Went to a great presentation the other day that your staff put on and they they shared some great numbers about the fifth cycle. So it's the state's recommendations on how you're doing on affordable housing. If you look at those numbers, you did seven hundred and seventy three percent of your very low, one thousand six hundred and sixty two percent of your low. You didn't quite get there on moderate, but on above moderate, you got two thousand five hundred percent. So Santa Ana has a great track record of being able to produce affordable housing. Have they done it because of the WHO or in spite of them? So if you go back and you look at the numbers, I think it's really interesting to break down where we're at on that five versus fifteen dollar conversation. No new projects came forward under fifteen. We have very tangible evidence, fifteen dollars does not work. No projects came forward. So that's producing zero dollars in affordable housing. Going back to fifteen would be completely unsustainable. Now, we've also heard actually a couple of calls already tonight on skilled and trained workforce language, that sliding scale is not going to work. The way it's set up, you're actually going to end up quite possibly disincentivizing the use of skilled and trained labor. You're woefully under the offsets to make that pencil out for developers. So we need some more work on that section if you're going to forward that language at all because it's not going to work out. We've heard about it. Also, the purpose section under the the WHO says it's to trigger when the number of units exceed the general plan density. If you go through the red line section, there's a number of spots in there where we're very concerned that that language gets very confused in some of the provisions that have been put forward. Would love the chance to sit down with you and discuss that a little more because certainty is what makes projects happen. And if there's areas where it's not clear when who does and doesn't trigger, that's going to be a big problem. That alone will be a project killer and a reason to give ourselves a little more time to study this and take a look. So in the past, we've worked, you know, I know two, three years ago, we worked, there was community groups we pulled together, there was affordable housing folks, they put us all in a big room over there in City Hall. We sat down and talked about that. Let's do that again. There's no reason we have to rush this because you have a WHO in place. You're collecting that five dollars. It's working, projects are coming forward under the five dollar fee. You're not losing ground by maintaining the status quo. We have an opportunity to go back and dig into this. You jump forward too quickly with a policy that doesn't work and we go back to zero dollars. No income. And that's that's unsustainable. We're in the middle of the housing crisis. The last thing we need to be doing is moving in a direction that's going to harm production. So what we would say is, let's call for a study session on this. Let's get some clarity on some of the excellent points that all the commissioners have raised tonight. Let's make sure we're advancing something that's actually going to work because because there's confusion, there's a labor disincentive, and we're not sure how this is actually going to work. Where's the studies and the economic analysis? Lots more to say.
Thank you for your comments. Second in-person speaker is Mr. Rich Gomez.
Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rich Gomez and I'm with Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Yes, we'd like to elaborate. Last year, the planning commission voted unanimously to amend the city's housing opportunity ordinance to require that developers or owners who would either pay into the city's in lieu fee fund at a reduced rate or who's, who use money from the in lieu fee fund to build affordable units would be required to use a skilled and trained workforce. The city council decided to make the language non-binding and aspirational, a great disappointment to our members, many of whom reside and attend school in the city of Santa Ana. The city now seeks to review both the amount of the in lieu fee as well as change the skilled and trained language from advisory to mandatory in order to benefit with the lower in lieu fee or use funds from the in lieu fee, a, a, a new fund for affordable housing construction. Southwest Carpenters see an improvement in this, in the skilled and trained workforce language by mandating the skilled and trained workforce in order to get lower in lieu fees or to use the in lieu fund to help finance affordable unit construction. However, the draft presented to the planning commission only provides for a partial skilled and trained workforce. And thus, we would suggest the planning commission to approve the draft with a few recommended changes. One, phase in a complete skilled and trained workforce over a period of three years, subject to bids submitted by trades. Two, include a provision that, that in workforce agreement with the LA OC Building Trades, including the Southwest Carpenters, would qualify the project for a $5 per square foot payment in pain and in lieu fee. And three, ensure that any local hire requirement, requirement be phased in at the same period as a skilled and trained workforce percentage and is phased in that includes a commitment to work with Santa Ana Garden Grove and Orange Unified School Districts along with Rancho Santiago Community College. Apprenticeship, apprentice and apprentice, pre-apprentice and apprentice programs to ensure continuing supply of young residents for the area. And number four, ensure production of sufficient workforce housing in the city's housing element to help ensure that Santa Ana and local residents don't have to move to the inland empire to find workforce housing. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Chair, that concludes the public comments.
At this time, the executive director, I would like to respond to the comments.
We don't generally respond to public comments. The public comments is for the planning commission to consider as part of the
Alright, the public hearing is now closed. Does the commission have any final questions of staff? Commissioner. Are you looking for a motion? Do you have any comments or additional questions?
No, I said what I need to say. You can make, make a motion. Because most of the recommendation is we have just passed through, instinctively talked.
We'll go one round and then Commissioner Ramos.
Yes, thank you. I have questions for staff. So I first thank you to the speakers that spoke tonight. I thank you for joining us in person or by phone. There are a few things that I heard that I believe may be untrue. So I first want to ask staff. Staff, was there a study that helped inform staff and city, the ad hoc committee that then came up with these recommendations?
There was a study that was completed by KMA to provide the updating information regarding the proposed in lieu fee.
Thank you. So these recommendations aren't coming out of the blue. These recommendations aren't coming out of the blue, but they're backed up by a study that was.
These recommendations were discussed by the ad hoc housing committee as well as the city council and they have been cumulatively summarized into the recommendation you have before you. And I would consider them to be representative of the city council as well as the ad hoc committee recommendations.
Thank you. I already asked this, but I will ask again. How, well, I'll just state it. But based off the number, the questions I asked earlier, Judson with the CDA, the CDA let us know that over 75%, 77% to be exact, of the in lieu fees that were collected were at a rate of $9 or more. And then I want to ask Judson a question or perhaps man whoever would be able to answer. But do, have we had developers that, have we had developers commit in the past to paying a $15 in lieu fee?
Yes, we have. We have had at least one developer execute an inclusionary housing plan committed to pay the $15 per square foot. They may be more, I've got, I, I'd have to refer back to our documentation.
Thank you. And I know that we're going through this round of questions and comments before we bring forth the motion. So based off what I have heard tonight, I would like to ask the commission to not only consider the recommendations that are, not only consider adopting the recommendations that are before us, but also consider increasing the in lieu fee. So right now with the recommendations that we see, the in lieu fee would fall within a range of $5 to $15. I, I don't see a reason to have the range begin that low at $5. If, if developers choose to use union labor, then I do believe that there should be incentives. So not speaking to that category and the incentives that will be provided if developers use union labor. But outside of that, I, I don't see why we should allow developers to pay $5 in lieu fee when we have precedent that they will pay $9 or more. So as I, as I think through this, I think the lower, the lowest range of that fee that they should be able to pay should be $10. I would also like to ask the commission to consider raising the $15 to $17.50. That falls within the range that the study that was conducted, so there was a study then, that falls within the range of that, which that study said that $17.10 to $17.80 would be feasible. And there's also a section in the ordinance that talks about the onsite requirements and depending on what the makeup, what the, the rents would be, so the percent, the, whether they be at low, very low, extremely low, or within the splendid income category, what percentage should be required onsite. So I would also like to ask the commission to consider raising those percentages and to consider raising them to 20% if the developer plans to provide units that would be affordable to individuals with low income. 15% at very low, 10% at extremely low, and 15% for the splendid income category with 5% being at low, 5% being at very low, and 5% being at the extremely low income. So as I make these recommendations for higher fees and higher percentages, I, I make them thinking of Santana's most vulnerable residents that have came to this planning commission in the past, that have came to the city council and have asked us to take action, to do what is right. And I also, hearing from the labor representatives tonight, I asked the, the commission to also consider whether what we're doing is enough and whether we increase the percentage of the skilled workforce that should be local hires. Thank you.
Commissioner McLachlan.
Um, I'm just, I'm afraid this question just came up. I think at this point in time, you know, the questions I've got tie back to some of the basic things that are being said that we've done all the research and I think there's nothing else. A couple of things that concern me is that I think that if we push everything that we're pushing, it's been just stay with the recommendation. I think that will completely stop the development process in the city. I think we did have gotten, we have this current pandemic situation still. And all of a sudden, we're going to raise the rates and do, put other requirements on, onto the developer. And I think we're just going to see very little of the work being done over the next couple, two, three years. I think that there's a belief that there's the money left on the table. I don't believe that. People working together, I think the developers have worked with our, with our, our staff. And I think with the current situation, they believe, I think if we go to a higher rate, we're going to basically cause delays in what we're doing. And I would think, I, I also have a problem listening to the $23 million that was previously spent because I'm not sure where that, listening to the different discussions of citizens, you know, to be there. I see that as sometimes not direct standing for the construction of, for the construction of affordable housing. I don't see that in the analysis that you presented, just an observation on my part. I think that the other thing is that we, we have, we're putting more responsibility. I think one of the things that's missing is we talk about the expertise that was had, that was had to train the people, work with the people, and I think that's how it really. And I think the other thing that we haven't done, I think it's something that we should consider is that the developers are the ones that are coming to us with the, with the projects. They're coming to us for some, some opportunity. Yet we continue to sit here and say, the developer wants to use in lieu dollars rather than do the construction onsite. And I think, I don't know why we haven't driven, drilled into that a little more, understand why the acquisition to do the in lieu housing. I mean, there was one comment there about in lieu housing that I think that referred to the Toll Brothers. And the fact is that the Toll Brothers did the in lieu housing. And I'm correct, if I'm wrong, then it was to allow them to lower, they, they took bonus opportunities so that they could lower the parking requirements, so that they could make parking requirements fit within the framework of that. But that's one of, one other development project in history, I think, had in lieu dollars, not in lieu dollars, in lieu construction.
Concessions were provided. Concessions.
Concessions. And we have to be careful when we talk about this concessions and how we define it and how we define it consistently.
So concessions are provided in order to assist with the creation of affordable housing. This is something that's allowable by the state. Under the state housing regulations, the state also allows for density bonus, which is an increase of density above and beyond what the city will provide. We have very similar language that has been incorporated into the WHO that allows for setback reductions that allow for height increase as well as parking as part of incentivizing. Because the cost of providing affordable housing will increase with the cost of providing amenities for it. So therefore concessions have been found to make it so that it's incentivizes the development of affordable house and make it feasible.
And when we look at what's been done in the last two, three years, how many have been, how many have fallen?
As you mentioned, the Toll Brother project fell into that, that I can recall.
Yeah, just for the record, this is Ali. Toll voluntarily elected to take advantage of the state density bonus law, not necessarily the city's inclusionary housing law, in order to exercise the option to provide in exchange for 10% very low units, provide reduced onsite parking.
So I mean, we have, thinking of all 10 years, that's what's been yielded at this point in time. And I find, you know, we have to start asking the question, why? And I just say it properly. Let's just push this through and figure it out. I think we need to start figuring out the flow versus these concepts, what these changes do, right? And I'm saying that also because I'm not sure what the, what the demand is at this point in time. What is, what is costing, I mean, maybe you've got a point, you've got the general plan, you have the, you have the, you have the, this WHO and you've got the housing law. You've got demands on that, that, then, by the priority on this, the priority is how we, or, out of the three projects. And I just think, you know, you need, you need a little more work when trying to figure. Then we hear this conversation, you know, we need more affordable housing. My question is, how much? How much can a floor housing do you need? Is it 500 units? Is it 5,000 units? What do we need? And, and, and we should be able to find that. But when I ask the question about how much does a cost per door for such a thing, it's not an answer.
So the answer we share with you was that the cost of providing and of construction per door varies on different projects. It can vary anywhere between 26,000, as demonstrated in the project on 17th Street. The cost can go up to 40,000 to 50,000 per door. We also share that the actual construction cost of an affordable housing project based on current construction costs in the state of California can range anywhere between 500,000 to 600,000 dollars per unit. So the amount that we provide is nowhere near what is required or is needed in terms of assistance to produce an actual affordable unit. That production is really using the leveraging ability of local funding to be able to ascertain funding through the state, funding through the federal government, so that it can be leveraged. That's how the city has chosen, at least to use some of its money to leverage affordable housing project, such as the one that was, you know, the Tiny Tim, the former Tiny Tim project and, you know, the, the assisted living housing project on 17th.
I go back to my fundamental question, really is, how much affordable housing do we need to save and cover up?
The answer to that, the only mandatory housing that we have, we need to be responsible for is the state requirement in terms of what we need minimumly to, to produce. And that is through the Reno allocation process. And that's what the housing element's goal is to provide the regulatory framework and the environment for producing those units. That's what at the minimum we're required to produce.
But, but the question, my question is not based on what the minimum requirements are, because I know this is the Reno. It's what is the, what's the demand that we ask for over and above the, the base of?
I think there's a high number of residents in the community that have struggles with the affordability of housing when they pay above the state's HUD actual requirements or standards that they have established for what is reasonable for the portion of their income to be spending on housing related costs. And that is 30% of the total income. The number of residents in, in our city that has or spend, or what's called rent burden is significantly higher than the 30% as established by HUD in terms of the amount of their income that they spend on rent and the costs of, relate to rent such as utility. And that's when it's considered rent burden to, to our residents in terms of what it costs to afford housing in the city.
I'm still, not with me, so you can ask a question.
That information was provided as part of the MDG study that was provided to the city council. And if you give me a moment, I can give you some of the information from that study.
So specifically, the study that was provided to the city council as an attachment to one of the staff reports. We provided data that twenty two percent of our population is considered cost burdened. Paying more than fifty percent of their monthly adjusted income towards their rent. And twenty six percent of our population are paying between thirty to fifty percent. So twenty two percent are severely cost burdened and twenty six percent are cost burdened in our community.
So the chat, I still, I understand what you're saying. But I'm I'm saying, how do we, how do we equate or calculate or come up with a solution that says in real numbers? This is what this means in doors have to be, the doors have, the doors that have to be created. We're here on, talking about housing, that's what we're supposed to be talking about, we're talking about housing. But I'm just asking the question, where are the, what are the goals and objectives that we have to achieve to meet the requirements? Because we're being told it's over and above the Reno numbers because the Reno numbers are considered to be the baseline. So the housing opportunity ordinance requires or is requiring fifteen percent of the new housing produced for those units that are requiring increasing density. That would, that is what the ordinance is establishing as a standard for low income. Or ten percent of the units to be produced be at very low and five percent and extremely low. So it is a ratio that is based on the units that are being proposed to come onto the marketplace. As a portion of the market rate units to be produced in the city. So if there is a hundred units produced at a market rate for a project that requires increasing density. Depending on the income level they provide, it could be anywhere between fifteen units to five units or ten units for a blended project. As a ratio.
Are you done, Mark?
Thank you.
It seems to me that.
No, I mean, I I understand what Commissioner McLaughlin is mentioning, like, it is a very complicated question, but it's like, when is, when is it going to be enough? Because, you know, when people, well, I mean, at least in in my conversations with a lot of residents and peers. You know, we talk about, when we talk about San Antonio, it's always affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing. So it's like, how much is enough and when do we draw the line? You know, it's like, is is, I don't know, it's it's a very complicated question, I know it's it's not an easy answer to answer, clearly, right? But, um, you know, it it's a continuing issue and, I mean, as as Commissioner McLaughlin mentioned, when is enough? You know, like, there's a baseline, but. No power really is solving this, you know, it sounds like the city of San Antonio is just like taking lead on this and. Where are the other cities? I did hear other counties, but not other cities, you know, bringing this up to your attention. So it's it's messy, that's all I gotta say, so.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. So I was on planning commission, we're going to approve the initial iteration of the housing opportunity ordinance. And I think a higher due win fee closer to what Kaiser Marsden documented in its June twenty eighth report is compelling now. Because residents need affordable housing, their need for affordable housing is more dire. For as long as I can remember, the city's below market rate housing construction has been skewed towards moderate income units. At least as long as I've been on the planning commission, except for a year and a half gap. So that's far outnumbered the production of low, very low and extremely low income units. Yet that's precisely what we need in San Antonio. I'd like you all to just consider the following, what I consider sobering statistics. Nearly fifty four percent of San Antonio residents rent in twenty nineteen, nearly sixty percent of renters were moderately or severely cost burdened. It's much worse in twenty twenty one. The gap between income and rent has exploded and this gap is a driver of poverty. You can look at page sixty one of your PDF, which is entitled The Gap in Rent and Income, and then page sixty two. Wages to afford a two bedroom unit, just to see that. As Judson mentioned, the who is just one tool we can use to create affordable housing and help finance a hundred and seven units. At La Placita Cinco, the Santa Anna Cards Collective and other projects. And one point five million was used for Westview House, I think that was eighty four unit development. And he went on to list other projects, so this money is used to leverage projects to help us build affordable housing. It isn't going to, I'm not looking at this as a as a unit by unit. Metric, I'm looking at this at how we leverage the money that we have, the twenty six million that he. That that Judson mentioned. Now, I personally want affordable housing built onsite, I don't want any fee, I want the units built. But I can get on board with giving developers the flexibility to choose an in new fee between seventeen and eighteen. Per square foot on a twenty unit or above project. I don't think now is the time to lower the in new fee when the need is increasing exponentially. I think it's the exact opposite, it's a time to increase it, especially when you consider that close to ninety percent of the residents. Securing affordable units are Santa Ana residents, those are the people that live in this city. That's why I think the who helps our residents, and so I would support what Commissioner Ramos laid out, which was the seventeen fifty on down to the ten. Varying from twenty plus units to the five and to the nine. And I also think that the mix that she described of onsite for twenty percent low, fifteen percent very low, ten percent extremely low. And then the mixed in income option of five percent per income level would make sense to me. Those are my comments.
Thank you, we have Chair Morrison on the line, does he have any additional comments?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I I guess. You know, I can appreciate the need for more very low income affordable housing. But I just don't see why, I I don't understand the logic in raising. In the fee. That it's been demonstrated that. We can't get fifteen dollars, I don't know how raising it will. Solve that problem. I would encourage, we've we've seen that between somewhere between five dollars and nine dollars seems to be kind of the sweet spot. I was wondering if staff knows if there are any developments that the planning commission has approved that. Did not pay the five dollar fee when it was available.
Can you rephrase or you can clarify the question?
Have, are there any projects with planning mission approval that have not, that could have pulled permits and paid the five dollar fee that opted not to do that?
Since last October.
So there are there are projects in the wings such as, if you're referring to a project that was approved after October. Of last year, such as Central Point. They are in fact, have been approved after the ordinance went into place. They qualify for the five dollars payment, but have not gone through the process of the plan check and. Being permit ready so that they can pay for the five dollars per square foot. We also have projects such as the Main Place Mall. That have opt to look at a provision in their plan to basically address the housing. Requirements of the who as as, you know, the the time and place for them to develop the housing development projects. They would today would qualify for any development that they have at five dollars. And I believe they are looking at processing for payment of the five dollar fee with an upcoming project that they have.
Okay, yeah, I was I was just wondering if there's any downward pressure from the five dollar, it doesn't sound like there is. And it 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 sounds like it's somewhere between five and ten. I would, I would be in support of sending a resolution back to council that asks them to study that further or create a. Some sort of tiered. Payment payment system that includes ten and five, starts at ten and goes down to five. The the other question I have regards. Accessible units. High percentage of very low income people statistically are disproportionately. Disabled, are any of these units required to be disabled accessible?
As part of the housing development and funding, they would have to provide housing for equal access that would include accessible units as well. Not all the units necessarily have to be accessible, some, but some of the unit can be made available for accessibility.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other concern I had was regarding retroactively applying fees to projects. That may have been previously approved, which were exempt under the previous who language. But now would be included under that language. Are there projects that you're aware of that fall into that category that the planning commission has approved and would be retroactively? Included in the inclusionary. Housing.
So under the. Under the current ordinance, the way it's worded is that the ordinance would apply unless the project has received. Building permit issuance or have paid their in new fee. The other options in terms of your question is that if projects that have been entitled. But have not yet obtained permit, those project would fall under this ordinance and would essentially be subject to the new fee. If the order should be approved.
But are we including new areas in this language that weren't previously included?
The proposed language would apply to all of the previous areas shown in the map that we share. Going back to two thousand fifteen, in addition to that, it would apply to any. If the general plan and when it gets approved, all of the focus areas, the five focus area, it would apply to that as well.
So there there are potentially some projects that. Well, I guess that's my question, my understanding is there is at least one project that would be retroactively charged fees that. Were previously exempt. If the, I I think if the general plan is adopted soon.
Some of the largest projects I shared with you, this thing would apply, correct? If adopted.
Yeah, so I I would recommend to council that, you know, it, to me, that's basically changing, you know, moving the goalposts on these developers. And I would, I would recommend that we revisit that language to exempt. Projects that have previously been entitled that were exempt from the, from the housing opportunity ordinance. See if I have any other questions here. I think that's that's the major focus of my points today, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Wu, you wanted to speak.
Yeah, let's go back to the recommendations that were taken today. And I think that what I've heard, very notions of protection, it's because of that. It seems to me the recommendation goes down the middle of everything that has been discussed. Before and to the committee and all of that. Not that that's bad, it's just. I think that's what I read too. That that incorporates a lot of the advocacy. And and it appears as much of those for for and 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 came out for the D. So what's the problem, right?
But, Vice Chair, were you gonna, everybody comments?
I think yes, I'll follow up with Commissioner Wu's question, so I know that Commissioner Ramos. Is proposing a motion, given if we if we do vote on a motion, does this come back to us? For for a second look or that motion is going to be wrapped into what's currently in front of us and then moved on to council? So, correct, any recommendation that maybe you make tonight in the form of a motion that gets a majority vote. Will then be forwarded to the city council with those recommendations in place for the city council to consider? And is there discretion to take out or add on to whatever we recommend, correct, what we recommend is not sandstone? There has been various discussion out on the various topics, I don't, I haven't heard, I've heard a motion and then possibly a second on. Commissioner Ramos motion, and then I don't know if there's a substitute motion out there.
I haven't made a formal motion yet.
I think that clarifies it. My my own general thought on the issue is I think these discussions aren't insular. That I've been having today, we've heard from previous meetings before, from the impact, the E R report to the general plan. You know, there there's different sides to to the issues at hand, there are certain. Certain stakeholders in San Antonio that are observing a rapid development in the city. And I think that's concerning and they're concerned about that that impact of all the new development. There are groups in the city that recognize a clear and present need for for low income housing. And so I know that we focus on the impact of who in terms of finance, in terms of. Of its scope, but I would. I would ask that we commission to kind of see it as an instrument in which we are more selective and deliberate in what's being developed in the city. I mean, a lot of the numbers that's been discussed, we. We have a strong development pattern in in the city in different income level and and housing stock. And so, given that the land that we have is a diminishing resource. The who, in in my perspective, in whichever shape it'll end up taking. I think it's just more of an instrument for the city to be more deliberate in what we see develop. And what needs the the city needs to address. And so if there's a motion, I'd like to entertain the motion and then there's a second.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
We'll let Commissioner Flapp.
Tom, just one, I'm just coming back to the state, you made, and then also, and that is, is that, you know, we talked about the front end. But we haven't talked about the back end of this, and it's, let's take for instance, a particular development that has a three stage process that.
a particular developer that has a three-stage process that might be year one, year six, or year 10, you know, it could be as far, as far as that, some of it could be like this year, two years from now, three years from now. And if this is going to be an annual process, where we update the two dollars per square foot on an annual basis, does that developer at this point in time have the developer's agreement to lock into a one pha- one phase, one rate for the entire duration of their project? I mean, we had the, we had the heritage project that came in front of us several years back and that was a very interesting combination of taking money, the in lieu dollars moved into a specific project that was built on First Street. And everybody thought that was great, except for the developer turned around in the, in the early stages and said, they're not going to develop the project as one project, they're developing as three phases. And those, those three phases have been built over the last five years. But they, they were, they were guaranteed a rate that was the nine seventy-five that everybody talks about, a nine twenty-five, that was the rate that was given to that project. And that project stayed throughout the entire duration with that rate. And I didn't see anything in the documentation administratively or anything that led you to believe that that was something that was going to be considered. I think there's a number of things in this document that just have not been spelled out or considered in depth. So the provision for the establishment of the fee is uh at the time of uh issuance of building permit, the current ordinance indicates that the entirety of the project uh and the fee for the in lieu would be established at the time of building permit issuance for the entire project. And then the payment of that can be done at the time of occupancy approvals. You're right, it does not address the multi-phasing of the development of a project. Um, the planning commission could consider uh phasing uh language that um is very similar borrowing language from the time of construction um that is already in the ordinance where it allows for uh if a project is proposed to provide for affordable housing construction in a multi, multi-phase approved development project that the units be produced with each phase of construction. Uh, I think borrowing an idea from such a section could be applicable to payment of in lieu fee is that for a project that's paid into the in lieu fee program per the ordinance, uh they would establish their fee at the time of first issuance and then be allowed to pay as each phase of development, the same fees over a period of time uh when that construction occur. So I think that's something that certainly the planning commission considered to be a recommendation to the city councils. If it chooses to move it forward.
I would also like to make a motion.
In a case, there are two, two motions, do we entertain both or do we vote one at a time?
Well, I, I think the first is that the, the motion needs to be made and there needs to be a second um first. Cause I, I, I haven't heard a motion formatted. There's been discussion about um different components, so it would be appropriate this time for um a motion to be made.
I would say since uh the chair is uh calling in have a motion first, have a vote and then, and then uh is that the case or?
It's at your discretion.
Oh, yeah.
Cause I, I think.
So, there, there's an option here if um essentially, any recommendation made tonight uh can also be forwarded to the city council for their recommendations. Um, even if there is uh ending up to be um no action, all of the discussion in here will be reflected so that the council can get the full breadth of the discussion and the issue. And they would be knowledgeable of the various issue that we discussed tonight. So uh the option tonight is to recommend the uh draft ordinance as is uh for the city councils to consider and for approving that or recommend that the council not considering approving the ordinance as is and add additional revisions recommended to the city council for their consideration uh such as all of the issues that were brought up by various commissioners tonight. So that could be a form of a motion as well.
Understood. At this time, is there any commission that would like to motion um for the following uh ordinance that has been reviewed?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear what you. I didn't hear what you said, Vice Chair.
Oh, I make a motion that we adopt the recommendation to staff.
I would like to make a substitute motion.
No, I just wanted to, because I have a very same recommendation to adopt this, that is either it gets adopted or the.
Substitute motions are considered by the acting chair.
What did you say? I can't hear you.
Substitute motions are considered by the acting chair.
What?
Is there a second for Commissioner Wu's motion?
Yeah, it dies because it's not second.
Commissioner Ramos, do you want to amend Commissioner Wu's second or do you wanna wait till we?
Can staff um please explain the, what happens here procedurally? When a motion is being made on a substitute motion, wants to be introduced?
There is a motion by Commissioner Wu on the floor right now. It's subject to a second. Um, I don't think there's been a second, but that's the point at which we're at right now.
Is there a second for Commissioner Wu's uh motion? Here and then, is there an alternative motion uh on the floor?
I would like to provide an alternative motion. Um, I would like to recommend that we adopt staff recommendations with a a couple friendly amendments. The main one would be changing the range of the in lieu fee from ten dollars to fifteen dollars. Um, from what is being proposed of, now which is five to fifteen. And then also amending the onsite requirement, the onsite requirements for affordable housing to be twenty percent at low, fifteen percent at very low, ten percent at extremely low. And the blended income option would be fifteen percent, five percent at low, five percent at very low, and five percent at extremely low income. The last one?
I'm sorry. Uh, I have amended onsite requirements for affordable to twenty percent at low, fifteen percent at very low, ten percent at extremely low, and the blended income option would be fifteen percent with five percent of that at low, five percent of that at very low, and five percent of that at extremely low. And I would um leave it to staff and the council to decide the, the ranges between ten and fifteen dollars uh based on how many units are within a development. But if we wanna think, uh logically, I think it would be in a dollar twenty-five increments as the fee increases.
Want a clarification, Commissioner Ramos, uh you previously advocated for a centi fifty.
Yes.
But, and so this is a change.
Yeah, so uh based off what I'm hearing from commissioners and um your thoughts actually and, and where your comfort level is, I am changing uh my official motion that I'm recommending. This was a range of ten to fifteen dollars.
I just want a notification.
Thank you for your question.
And is there any?
Is there any um position on the um applicability of the ordinance in terms of entitlement or building construction permit?
Um, can you please uh restate what is in the staff recommendation as of now?
So the current ordinance established at the time of building permit. Um, the discussion tonight has also raised uh different projects that were entitled uh at a different time under the fee of five dollars. And uh there was discussion whether or not uh, you know, to allow those project to be vested at the rate of five dollars. Because they were proved under the, the assumption and investments assumption as, as discussed, I heard.
So they were entitled?
They were entitled after the current ordinance was put into place after October, September of twenty twenty.
Okay, so yeah, that's fine. So, if, if already entitled, if entitled before tonight, then I am okay with them being able to pay the fee that, at which they were entitled. And then, I'm sorry, was there another question?
So, so far, what I've heard in the motion is to increase the range uh to be between ten and fifteen dollars.
Yes.
Uh, to establish a different um onsite construction requirement at twenty percent at low.
Yes.
Fifteen percent at very low, ten percent at extremely low, and then a fifteen percent blended rate uh having five, five, five for the three income levels. Um, and then to basically vest the project that has already been entitled.
Yes, um, and on the, I know that an additional incentive to providing union labor would be uh fees that are under the ten dollars and I'm okay with that, staying as is.
So basically leaving the incentive in place that's proposed.
Do we need to summarize the motion again?
Sure. So the motion would be for the approval or recommend the city council adoption of the current ordinance with the following recommendation to increase the range um of the in lieu fee from five to fifteen to ten to fifteen dollars as the uh the base and then the ceiling. Two is to change and modify the onsite uh production requirements from the existing proposal um to require twenty percent at low income, fifteen percent at very low, ten percent at extremely low. And then for the blended rate is to be at fifteen percent with five percent for low, five percent for very low and five percent for extremely low. Uh, in addition is to vest projects that have already been entitled uh under the previous five dollars and then leaving the uh existing recommendation for the incentive of the in lieu fee um payment should they have inclusion of skill and trained workforce and local hire requirements.
Commissioner Ramos, is that uh correct?
Yes, thank you.
Do I have a second for motion?
I just have a point of clarification on that before I make my second, i- if I do. So the in lieu fee schedule, just so I'm understanding this right, that in lieu fee schedule has four tiers from five to twenty or more. The range of, of, of that can be between ten and fifteen.
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay, but we're not going to see the situation where the five to nine is ten, right?
I'm sorry.
The, the, I, I guess my concern is that's a narrow range, but we're going from ten to fifteen. The council can pick the, the um the gradation or the, the fee schedule at that point, but it has to be between ten and fifteen.
Yes.
Okay, I'm good with that. That's my second.
Hearing a second, uh, Madam Secretary, please uh call for a roll vote.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a point of order? Is there a discussion after the second?
I'll call a question. Sarah.
I'll go ahead with the vote. Commissioner, all the ready.
Yes.
Commissioner called around.
No.
Commissioner McLaughlin.
No.
Commissioner Ramos.
Yes.
Commissioner Wu.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fan.
Yes.
Chair Morsy.
No.
Motion passes for uh four with three dissenting and that's uh Commissioner Calderon, Commissioner McLaughlin, and Chair Morse.
Okay, uh, moving on to the general comments, uh, are there any comments from staff?
Staff has no comment, thank you.
Can we have a post discussion on that motion?
Um, yes, this, I think the motion has been made, but yeah, if you have any general.
Just briefly, I, I understand your concern, I was marking. The thing I'm thinking is that the developers that want to do business in San Antonio do it. Not everyone will want to be in this. There are easier cities to get property done because they have the land. Uh, the cost is lower. Uh, Santa Ana is what it is. And you either got to love the city and you've got to work with it and some developers have figured out a way to make affordable housing for the very low income. And I like to encourage those developer to continue for the big project guys, you know, um you know, I, I, I don't know what to say about them, but I think they will find a way to make a pencil out if they want to do business here.
Commissioner Wu, are there any other additional comments? Here none, um the meetings adjourned, the next regular meeting will be held on Monday, November eighth, twenty twenty-one at five thirty P M.
I, I do have a request before you adjourn uh for that meeting in November. Uh, is um right now tentatively scheduled uh for the planning commission to consider the upcoming general plan update. I would like to request and we will follow up with our secretary uh for you to potentially have a, a second follow-up meeting date uh during the same week. Uh, just in case if we need to have additional uh discussion or extended discussion regarding the general plan so that it can be completed and conducted the same week. So we will follow up.
Talking about November fourth, right? That's a backup to the general planning meeting.
Uh, it's November ninth and uh our commissioners have confirmed attendance.
Got it, thank you.
Well, so is, is it just one meeting or having a backup of another meeting in case that meeting officer?
Not that it would fall through, but in case you, we see or you have an extended discussion that cannot be completed that same night.
Okay. I'm sorry, you have to speak plain English to me. Sometimes I don't understand.
On November eighth and November ninth, pencil is in.